And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for the passing of David Kree. You seated? And when you are ready, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Ponse.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temelavel.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember De La Rosa will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. We have a presentation by, with Jim Lute-Johann.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was just re-sending the video to Jamie because it's, for some reason, not making it through the firewall. So I'm gonna hope that he's lucky. Play it for you. In just a moment. So. You still haven't got it? Well, shoot. That was a lot of work for something I can't show you. Hopefully, we'll have it as a follow-up. But you do have in front of you the quarterly one-sheet, which summarizes in paper the same content that we normally put on the video. And just for the sake of the record, I'll go through a couple of the highlights, I guess. We had a couple of new members this quarter. That was Island Fire Extinguishers, who came back after an absence, and Nicologic LLC, which is what we all call Catalina Island Horseback Adventures. We did multiple-member e-blasts. Programs and events included multiple mixers. Our annual marketing conference was held in October. The 51st Annual New Year's Eve Gala was once again a sellout, held in the fourth quarter. And you have in front of you the visitor numbers, which were kind of a mixed bag for the fourth quarter. On the backside is all of our paid tourism promotions and social media promotions, all of which were very successful for the period. And probably most successful or most enjoyable to help bring to the island was the NBC and KTLA promotion, including the one where City Manager David Maestros was the guide to the media on-island for an NBC California Live segment. And moving on from that. I was going to show you that video and then ask your preference going forward because it's a very time-consuming project to put those videos together. We don't mind doing it. But as we're going into the budgeting season, we were sort of looking at carving up resources where we could use our time best. And so I wanted your feedback on whether you prefer a video. Or better than I just did on the fly, I can do a PowerPoint and walk you through it, kind of like I used to, but I can still try and keep it speedy. But we'll go with your preference.
You're giving us all the information in written form, right? And then you're speaking to it. I don't care.
Yeah. I mean, I think it was nice because it was understandable for people at home to watch as well. But I think you do a sufficient job with doing a presentation and save that amount of time for the, for that. Oh.
I got the link, but there's no way I can put it out much later.
Okay. Well, we can at least share it with Council for follow-up this time. And it will be going on our website. And with that feedback, I'll make sure we do a lovely PowerPoint, but maybe not spend the video production time going forward for next quarter. All right. So I put some handouts on the dais for each of you. And there's more copies over here, just to remind folks of some of the other things we've got going on. Yes, Jamie brought up the one-sheet. And for members of the audience, there are some over here on the side. And those will be also in this week's Thursday update. And going back to the PowerPoint. All right, I think Jamie's driving that part. Jamie, are you able to go back to the PowerPoint? Okay, well, I'll wing this part, too. So I have shared with you some of our upcoming events, including the Taste Around of Avalon, which is slated for May 29th. As of end of day yesterday, we had 16 restaurants participating this year, so a good number for that. And some of you are probably already aware, we had a sort of a golden opportunity to work with Pellegrino on a new promotion that's called Say Chow. And they're introducing a new product line, and it will be featured in Ralph's Markets. And the island is featured as a destination for a giveaway that participants can enter through a QR code to win a trip to the island. On the backside of that is something we did with the publishers of Nightshade. It's a walking map or a golf cart driving map, depending on your preference, that matches all of the locations named in the book that came out officially today, Nightshade by Michael Connolly. Today was the official launch date. And if you haven't yet read it, I know there was a copy being passed around among you guys. I think it was a good read. And I certainly enjoyed seeing derivative variations on some of our local color and culture, you know, woven nicely into the storyline. He has now confirmed in multiple interviews that this is intended to be a series. So we should see other books coming forward. And he spent quite a bit of time on the island himself, doing some social media promotions. Finally, I wanted to share with you, and I've given hard copies tonight to Council, but we will be distributing now, in general, by PDF, the final Catalina Island Sustainable Tourism Plan. You may remember that a couple of years ago, we had a joint session with Council and our board, and that was one of the directives at the end of the day, was to move forward in developing a plan. And in partnership with Pepperdine University students, we have now completed the plan. It is amendable. It doesn't mean that it's written in stone, but it is a good plan, I believe. It follows GSTC guidelines. Those were the same guidelines that Miles, when he was here, for that joint session, shared with you, that they had implemented in Park City. And I'm actually very proud of the work of the students and my alma mater. And I think you will find something that touches on personal passions for each one of you. And Mary, they call upon me to work with Edison, so wearing your other hat, for some additional tracking on our water and electrical usage. So we'll look forward to trying to find a way that we can capture and report that on Care for Catalina, which they recommend, and I heartily agree, should now, since it is its own 501(c)(3), have its own website, have its own social media, and so on. So we will be moving forward on that as well. We have officially opened the Care for Catalina bank account. And I happily made the first deposit into that account, for my personal account. So just 100 bucks on deposit, but that's what we've got to start the kitty. And we're moving forward to bringing a lot more of this into action. And possibly even another joint session with you all to really talk about implementation and responsibilities.
This is a lot.
And I don't know if I went off-script without my PowerPoint and everything in front of me. So if I missed something, I apologize. One thing, another event that's coming up, but we don't have the materials in hand yet tonight, is Pride, of course. We managed to do almost as many acts as last year, but not quite. We intentionally dialed it back just a couple of notches. And so we will have a kickoff party Friday night at the Chi, called the Pink Pony Club Party. And then we will have all-day programming on the stage, or not all day, from noon until 10:00 PM at Wrigley Stage. And we have a pop-up event at Pier 24, where Absolute Vodka will be hosting cocktails on the patio. And got lots of promotions with our hotels, and it's looking very promising. Really good web traffic on it this year. I will not be here for the next council meeting, which is normally when we would do any sort of a proclamation or photo op. But I'll work with you all on how maybe that can happen in my absence. So, but I will be here for Pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm wondering, with this plan, if we do a joint session again, if we can also look at, I think, a number of the initiatives that are in here line up with what SoCalren is trying to do in terms of sustainability and environmentality. So there may be some funds there to go after to get some of this done for the next stages, too. So let's make sure to do that when we do.
Environmentality?
Yeah.
Oh, that was a big one.
You're welcome.
The students were very complimentary of the city and conservancy staff that they engaged with, too, said it was really good. And they especially called you out, Mr. Maestros.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
The numbers look good.
Okay, Finance Director.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just a quick presentation for you all tonight, focusing on capital improvements again this week. Last meeting, we talked about the four major grant-funded CIP projects, so the Mole, Five Corners, the Pebbley Beach Road revetment, and the pier, the club dock pier replacement. For this meeting, we're gonna focus on the four major projects in the upcoming budget, where we anticipate construction with spend over $250,000 that are not grant-funded. Those four projects right now are anticipated to be the Green Pier rehabilitation, Creston Avenue Pebbley Beach Road, or the Elbow improvements, citywide street paving, and the Pebbley Beach landfill life extension project. So kind of just a quick update on where we're at with the Mole. During this last fiscal year, the city submitted a grant application to Caltrans as part of the ATP Cycle VII funding. We won't find out whether or not we're successful in that grant application until sometime in the fall. But there are some smaller projects that we are working on to try to make that area look a little more permanent and cleaned up. One of them being kind of replacing some of the stanchions with a more permanent-looking stanchion. And then also removing the Palapa Shade area to kind of create a crosswalk. If you recall, we did come to Council around this time last year to discuss that removal. It didn't occur just due to other priorities and projects going on around town. But we expect kind of construction in that area to start after the visitor season sometime in the fall. But the stanchion replacements potentially would be happening before the peak season. So just kind of a quick recap for Council and the public of kind of what the ultimate goal for that Five Corners intersection is. It's extending the Serpentine Wall to kind of act as a better crowd control while opening up some crosswalks at what we think are some strategic areas to kind of better flow visitors from the Mole to Front Street. So then this is just kind of an artist's rendering that we'd previously shared with Council, kind of an aerial view of what that section, cross-section, could look like. The construction, as I understand it, it's relatively straightforward. It's, you know, just really finding the right time of year to do the work. And the, kind of the whole vision, and I think the grant application, we're looking at a project cost of $500,000.
Whoa.
So the, this picture, I was told, is from 1986, I believe, so before my time. So the, right now, we're kind of wrapping up the first phase, if you will, of the Green Pier rehabilitation, replacing 21 blings. Kind of the other components that will need to be phased in as part of the rehabilitation of the pier are electrical improvements. The Pebbley Beach landfill expansion. Put a few items in bold because they're, I think, important for Council and the public to know. There's less than two and a half years of life in the current existing height of the landfill. The city does have a plan to address that. And that is to construct a wall to essentially extend the height of the landfill. We think the extending the height could buy us an additional 25 years of useful life out of the landfill. But there is a cost to that. And right now, our best estimates are somewhere between 2 and 3 million. Just to kind of put that into scale, that's about the annual solid waste budget for the city, 3 million. So that's not a small number. What, two things hopefully will help with that. One is we're looking at potentially increasing it in phases, so we wouldn't necessarily do all the construction all at once. And then the second thing we're exploring is to see if we can use the monies we've set aside for landfill closure to potentially be used to expand the height. So there's a lot of moving parts. Right now, we're still in kind of the permitting planning stage. Because the landfill is located outside the city limits, all the permitting planning has to go through LA County. So Jocelyn's been working hard to move that along with the county, and she can speak to it more detail. But if everything goes kind of as we're looking or plan, we would be expecting construction to start summer of next year. So stretched it a bit, but it's such an important project that I wanted to include it and touch on it in this presentation. And lastly, the kind of the fourth big project that I wanted to touch on that is the citywide street paving project. So what happened this year, it was in the budget this year, but there are a few steps we really needed to do before we could get it out to RFP and work on the project. And a big one being assessment of all the current status of the roads. And why that was important is if we end up doing it in phases, we want to prioritize the sections of the roads that are in most need. Currently, city staff's preparing an RFP that's likely to be issued sometime in August. If all goes as planned, we'll be looking to award that contract in October with the street paving going on in the winter months. And in the current budget, we're looking at $850,000 towards that project. At that amount, we probably would be looking at phases. I don't know if that would be a complete city street paving at that amount. So either we'd have to look at phases or increasing that budget amount. But those are kind of the four big projects I wanted to touch on that are gonna be included in the budget. So when we get into budget discussions, between these four projects and the four we talked about last week, that's probably 90% from a dollar spend of what we're gonna be looking at for next fiscal year. The only one that was over $250,000 that I didn't touch on is potentially a new roof at City Hall, but that just didn't seem that exciting to talk about. But that one's also currently in the draft of our CIP plan, and it's about $300,000, so.
Any questions? Once again, very thorough. Thank you. Are there any announcements or written communications? None? Okay. Department head reports?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council Members, and City Staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. I'm doing things a little bit different today. I will be showing what the Public Works team has accomplished and what they've worked on the last couple of months. It is National Public Works Week, so I think pictures speak volume. Who has accomplished such a lot in such a short period of time. And you'll really see the magnitude of these projects. So first, we have Lover's Cove. They demoed the temporary stairs. They put a concrete foundation, installed a new platform. You see there, the stairs, the railing, the steel wiring. You could see it's just beautiful. Next, we have the Green Pier restroom. The crew replaced the old toilet carriers and painted the walls. Then we had MKS go in there, redo the flooring. And they did an intense tile cleaning and regrouding. Then our crew went back in there, installed new partitions, new toilets, changing tables, urinals, doors. The women's restroom, we ran out of time. A lot of the businesses were, and tourists were needing for those restrooms to be open. So we'll tackle the women's restroom come after Labor Day. But this is probably our most beautiful bathroom in the whole town. Public bathroom. Leaks. On top of all of these, having these ongoing projects, we have leaks in the middle of all of this. And here's some pictures. They pop out throughout town. Either it's lower terrace irrigation leaks and JMF. Another one in middle terrace, Burma Trail, Sumner, and I can continue. But this is just a snapshot of what happens. And then we had the big one that I really enjoyed working on with Dave Hart. And this was the kids' playground. The crew demoed the old playground and rubberized flooring. They assisted the contractor in installing the new playground and rubberized surface. There's still some finishing touch-ins that are, finishing touches that are still needing to be done, like the lighting and footholds and those, that kind of jungle gym area. But it's looking great, and the kids are really enjoying it. And I don't have a picture of this, but the rubberized flooring also was replaced at the Kenaby Park. And this was a great opportunity for the crew to see firsthand how a professionalized crew does that rubberized patching and resurfacing. Then we have just routine things that we do around town. The replacement of the beach sand and also in the volleyball courts, and installing some new bollards that you see. These are gonna also have reflective tape, so those, that's coming. But just in the middle of, you know, all these projects, getting to do stuff like this.
And how do we, on those bollards, how do we, if the fire department needs to go down the street, how do they, how does that work?
There's a special key that you, a wrench, the fire department usually carries. And then we have extra that we're giving out to sheriff, for example, for emergencies and fire department. So, yeah.
Excellent.
And if an emergency, absolutely, and someone doesn't have a key, they break away. So they easily fold. But that's only an emergency. So I think we're encouraging, please do not run them over. And then on top of all the projects and emergency repairs and leaks, the crew still finds time to do the regular routine maintenance. And these are some examples of regular routine maintenance. And then we work really closely with local contractors, like MKS or State Green for weed abatement. And in this case, it was Jordal to do pavement and storm drain repairs. And then what's up next, looking forward the next few weeks, the crew will be working on Front Street for preparation for the summer. Street markings, Pebbley Beach repairs, the Sembraur Fountain, installation of a new scoreboard. And then weed abatement this week. And we're working with Island Company to do a city washdown tomorrow through Friday. We're actually gonna start at 5:00 and then hopefully get done by 10:00. I put 12 on the announcement, just in case we're doing some cleanup and whatnot. But we're hoping to get done because Front Street gets really, really busy. Really, I just wanted to point out with these pictures that the crew is small but mighty. They work so, so hard. So again, like I say every other week when I see you guys, please, when you see them out there, the community, please thank them. They do, there are ardent sung- Um, they do, um, they're our ardent sung heroes of the, of the town. Any questions?
No, but thank you.
Yeah, all of that was great. I did have two things I wanted to share with you, which I passed on to the city's social media account for Instagram. One is a new truck type called Cania, S-C-A-N-I-A. It's a Swedish company, and it's a hot asphalt and water truck, so you can do repairs all from one vehicle, usually with much, uh, lower staff numbers than normal. Um, and then the other thing was, uh, Germany is testing out currently, uh, self-healing concrete. So you have, like, if you're doing concrete bricks or concrete stamped ground or just concrete in general, um, it can actually refuse together if there's cracks in the concrete from general earth movement or anything else like that. So, just something to keep an eye out for in the future, possibly if we can...
I'll, uh, get together with you on that.
Yeah.
Sounds very interesting.
I'll send them to you. But the, the truck was pretty amazing. It literally, um, heat sealed the crack in the road and then, uh, cooled it with the water in the same vehicle without having to have anyone come out of the truck. So they actually use them for highways because they don't interrupt traffic. People can go around a single truck, so, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Very cool.
I was like, that'd be kind of put in the budget at some point, yeah. Make the repaving a little easier.
Yeah. All right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. We'd never have issues.
Who's up next?
Thanks, Jackie.
Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Michael Aguirre, Fire Chief. Uh, weed abatement, remind everybody by June 1st, please, uh, have your weed abatement done. After that, we'll be going out and Devin helped create a form that we're gonna be able to go out and take photos and drop a pin and then be able to mail out and leave a notice on the door that they have 10 days to clean up their brush, and we'll be back for another inspection. Other than that, LA County have equipments here for the week. I don't know if you've heard them, they're on the fire breaks.
Yeah.
They'll be clearing out some stuff, so they're here till Friday.
That's fascinating to watch.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to be doing...
Oh, go ahead. Uh, no, no, no.
Got some good aerial overviews of them in the drone.
There was that?
Yeah, he got some great shots from up above, so, yeah. Thanks to them for, that's it, for doing that annually.
So I have a question, so the weeds in the alleys, and they're right in the middle of the alley, you know? So can we encourage households to maybe just go and clean those up? Because I know I have them and I, I'll, I'll pluck mine out, but it would be nice if people would help, because I don't think we, I don't know that we send city crews to do the weeds in the, right down the middle, you know? So, like...
We, it should, if it's city street, we should, the city crew should do it.
Yeah.
In the alleys.
We'll look at that.
Okay, I mean, I don't mind doing them in my, you know, in my backyard, but, because it's right where, you know, in between the car, the wheels, the tires, you know, that's where it's right in the center.
If it's on their house side, that's the things we'll be trying to go out and give them notes for.
The house side, definitely.
For the bad ones, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Sergeant Klein filling in for Matt King. He'll be, uh, on vacation till June 7th, so I'll be available, I'll be on island. Uh, but I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce a new deputy who started here for us in March. He's usually off on Tuesdays but happens to be here. His name is Brian Sissel, and he's done a great job. He's fit in perfect with our community. I was walking on Front Street with him today, and people are coming up, calling him by his first name in the short time he's been here, and I'd asked him, "How do you know these people?" And he goes, "Well, I, I put notes in my phone with, you know, how I met them." So I'll let Brian tell a little bit about himself, okay?
Good.
Hi, everyone, Deputy Brian Sissel. I've been here since March. Um, previous to that, I worked at Century Station in the city of Lynwood. Um, I grew up coming here and from Boy Scouts when I was a kid, and came here with my family, raised my kids coming over here, so it's a blessing to be able to come over here and actually work with your community. Um, with the city of Lynwood, I worked with the, the city quite a bit with, you know, the mayor and the, um, council members and everything, so it's gonna be nice to have that experience and bring it over here with your community. Um, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Are you related to any of the Sissels that you...
Yes.
All righty.
I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
You know, and it was, it was Tony Sissel, was their son, remember? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anyway. Oh, welcome.
Let me ask you about me, you know, I, like I said, I was in Boy Scouts, came here. Um, I coached, I coached surfing for, uh, high school, so I was very involved with the high school, and, yeah, so that's about it.
And you have grown children or no?
Yeah, I have an 18-year-old, a 21-year-old, and a 30-year-old.
Oh, excellent. Well, welcome. All right, we'll see you on the beat. So are you a daytime or what, what's your shift typically?
I mean, I'm mostly on PM shift, but I work all hours.
Okay, okay.
And I'm open to any questions or open, trying to help with any problems you guys might have.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And since the last city council meeting, we had 61 calls for service, 95 observations by the deputies. There were four arrests, one for felony assault, one for battery, one for vandalism, and one for DUI. And on top of that, there were 12 citations written since the last meeting, from everything, from stop signs to cell phone usage to unlicensed drivers. Uh, some other good news for the Sheriff's Department is we've got another new deputy starting Saturday, Corinne DeSoto. And since I've been here, this is the healthiest we've been. We only have one deputy that's off on leave, but other than that, we are fully staffed. And since I've been here, we've been running at least four, four officers down and a sergeant. So this is the healthiest we've been, which is good news.
And it's female?
What's that?
Female?
Female, yes, Corinne DeSoto. She's also coming from Century Station, so she'll be starting Saturday and she'll be on the graveyard shift. Uh, for Memorial Day and the Wine Mixer, we've got, the Wine Mixer will be funded by a private entity contract, uh, through the Island Company, so it won't be any of our Avalon funds that are staffing that event. Those are all through an entity contract.
Are those other officers that are gonna be coming, or are they gonna be hiring some of you all?
It's all, it's all of our local people. Now that we're fully staffed, I'm not bringing anybody from the outside, it'll be all of our personnel there.
Okay.
So I'll have a sergeant and a deputy at the Wine Mixer working it, so we'll, we'll be up to snuff and fully staffed. And that's about it. Any questions?
Okay, so I have a question.
Yep.
Because I understand when you, if you get, if you arrest somebody for, for a DUI, I thought the protocol would be to impound that vehicle since we built the impound yard so that you could put them there, but I understand they're not being impounded?
Okay, if a vehicle is legally parked after a DUI, you can't tow it. So if I pull somebody over along the curb and it's legally parked, I cannot impound their vehicle.
So, so stop them in the middle of the street and don't let them park?
If they stop in the middle of the street, sure we can.
But how many people do that? Because the first thing you tell them is, "Pull over."
Yes. It's not, it's not any different in this city than any other city we work in.
I know, I know.
It's California vehicle code, that if a vehicle's legally parked, we can't impound it.
Okay.
Whether it's a DUI or an unlicensed driver, it still, still applies.
Well, I don't appreciate the grin on your face because we got the impound yard, so that we thought we'd be able to put them in there, and now we find out we can't. Were we aware of that, that we wouldn't be able to put them in our impound yard?
We can put them in. If they're stopped in the street and they have to be towed, they'll be...
If they're stopped in the street...
There's not always a parking spot.
So may, okay, so maybe they're, okay. All righty, thank you.
Yeah, and then what could happen on that, Annie, too, is if we make them stop right there and they don't pull to the curb, that could be contested also. Well, the sergeant told me to stop right here in the middle of the street, and now they towed my vehicle when they told me to stop right here.
Okay. That's frustrating, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can I ask, um, I know that we've still have a number of vehicles that have not been stickered yet after the April 1st deadline. Um, are we, are you issuing citations for unstickered licensed vehicles, or what is the story right now with that for, between you guys and code? I wasn't sure where that's following. Maybe if Jocelyn, you can follow up on that question, too.
Code is.
What do you do?
Yeah. I have a question. If you issue a citation, it is a vehicle that we should have saw.
Okay.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Or Matt?
Good evening again, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Uh, just a quick update on revenues. Um, March TOT ended up down around eight percent. February was up 16.9%. Um, so kind of where I was presenting in April, where we're at, we're down about 20,000 from kind of where I estimated we'd be. Um, April, it's really too soon to tell, the early reporters, it looks very promising, um, but since we do have some hotel closures, it's hard to know whether that's, uh, true gains or, uh, if it's just guests that previously would have been staying at that or one of those closed hotels. Um, but early reports are promising. AdTAC similarly was down 2% in March, but it was up 35 in February. Um, and Warfitch was down 1% in March. Uh, March, uh, really in April, kind of it depends on when the Easter falls. A lot of times that, uh, plays a big role in kind of visitor-driven numbers in those two months. Easter being later this year, I think there's a reason to be optimistic for April, um, but it's too early in the month, uh, to really know where we're gonna land. Uh, one positive one that we do know is April nightly moorings were up 27%, where, um, March moorings were down 15. Uh, so there's a reason to be optimistic for April, but it's, it's really, uh, difficult for me to kind of see where the next three months are gonna, going by looking backwards just because of kind of how, how good of a February we had and, and kind of how March ended up. Uh, finances right now are really focused on the, the budget, and, uh, we'll be coming back in June with, uh, more detailed budget presentations, so. Unless there's questions?
No, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Um, I have a couple updates this evening. Uh, the first one, tentatively, uh, the first weekend, June, we're planning for the installation of the reverse vending machine. Um, it's on island, so I'm hoping at next city council meeting, June 3rd, we'll be able to do a little presentation and, uh, kind of a how-to on how to use the machine for, um, for our residents. Uh, so that's super exciting. Um, I'll keep you all informed once we finalize those details. Um, just want to let everybody know that kitchen pails and stickers have been, uh, resupplied here at City Hall. Um, so if you're looking to, uh, freshen up your, uh, collection carts or you need a new kitchen pail for the summer, uh, we've got them here at City Hall. Um, and then, uh, the Pebbley Beach landfill project, um, I am super excited. I feel like we're making a lot of headway, uh, with LA County. Uh, we submitted our initial study and mitigated negative declaration, uh, to LA County Regional Planning earlier this month. Um, I've had great discussions with County Public Works, uh, the Air Quality Control District, um, the Public Health Department, and Supervisor Hahn's office, um, in sharing information about the project and the site. Um, tentatively, uh, we'll have our first public hearing, um, with the Integrated Solid Waste Management Task Force, um, in mid-July, uh, with an on-island meeting, um, site meeting, maybe in August or September, um, for those county contacts. Um, if you want to review, uh, the initial study, um, it's been posted online at cityofavalon.gov/pbl. And if anybody has any questions related to a project, they can email me, uh, jfrancis, F-R-A-N-C-I-S, at cityofavalon.gov. Um, and that's, uh, that's all I have.
And that was PBL, it's in Pebbley Beach landfill, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question, the new code enforcement person, uh, do we have a tentative date for that person to start?
We do not.
Okay. I was talking to Jim, and the forensic's still coming in, and, um, so we, and you said he's, it's coming in on the 27th? Yeah, so, and, so we don't know if that person will be on board by then or not?
Uh, no, not yet. Something I'm following up on this week.
Okay.
And then, is there a process currently for unstickered vehicles if they are receiving multiple citations to be removed? Is it something where we're doing the same type of, we don't have an amnesty program right now? Um, so is there any leeway for that, or are those automatically being cited, cited again, and then impounded? Or is there, what is the process for that? I'm not familiar with it.
Um, sure, so, uh, first off, we do have an ability for a payment program. So if people want to get legal and they, they, they're like, "Oh, I, there's no way I can pay off X-dollar amount in parking citations to get my parking permit this year." Please send me an email, call me, talk to me. Um, we have the ability to set up a payment schedule through our ticket citation processing vendor, Data Ticket. Um, so first, there's, there's that option. Uh, second, um, if, uh, you don't know what to do with your old golf cart and you want to get it off the island and you're just not sure how and you need help doing that, um, again, contact me, contact code enforcement, we'd be happy to help you out with that process. Um, lastly, as far as, uh, impounding, um, we're scheduling, um, probably either the end of, um, next week or the following week to do our first shipment of the motorcycles, the, uh, golf carts, and, uh, I think we maybe have two full-sized vehicles up at the tow yard to get those off island, um, with Kruger tow. Uh, so once we do that, we'll kind of, uh, refocus our efforts on, um, vehicles that you're mentioning that obviously, um, you know, they haven't been permitted in a long time. Uh, chances are their vehicle registration's not current, they have lost the citations, and looking at doing enforcement action on those vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jocelyn.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Robuffo, Connect Planner. Uh, just wanted to give a brief overview of what's gonna be on our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night, uh, here at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. We have five items on the agenda tomorrow night. Uh, one is just a receive and file for the approval for demolition and new construction of a new single-family residence at 306 Clarissa. That was approved at the previous, uh, Planning Commission meeting. Uh, item number two is a site plan variance and coastal development permit to allow construction of a two-story accessory building at, uh, 126, 128 Hiawatha. It's gonna, the, the particular building will be adjacent to the alley that's right there. I think it's also known as Hattie's Lane by some people in town. And then the other three items, um, are split between various revocations of short-term rental permits and licenses. Uh, Dave, I didn't know if you wanted to speak more to that?
Sure, I'll address it.
Okay, so I'll let Dave kind of give you a little more overview of that, that those would be, uh, the main items for the agenda tomorrow night. Any questions?
If you ever happen to find out how Hattie's Alley was named, I would love to know that story.
I don't know when, but I did find, uh, I think it was a permit when I was doing research on the property, as early as the 70s, where it was called Hattie's, like H-A-T-T-I-E. Uh, more recently, I've heard it as Hattie's, as H-A-D-I. So I don't know even when that change happened, but it, it goes back pretty far, actually, that, uh, alley was originally provided as an easement back in the 1930s. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Green. I'll give you an update on some capital projects that are happening. On the Five Quarters project, our focus on the concrete work, you can see we're continuing on the, on the northwest side there, trying to get all those properties taken care of here before the visitor season, so we're getting close to that. Um, and then we'll move over here to Avalon Canyon, back to here to the front by City Hall after we get that done. So just give you kind of a timeframe there that that work is gonna proceed ahead. Now that we've got the park done, we're getting more requirements for parking there, but we still, we need to get that concrete work done for it to be safe, to be able to open up the road. Uh, the green pier, um, we performed placing 22 piles, so that was good news in a very short time. Um, kind of a, uh, very hurried schedule, uh, intense, long, long days that we spent out there to get it done. Contractor did very well at that. Um, and then you'll see that work continue on under the pier for probably through next Wednesday. They won't be working on, uh, Saturday, Sunday, Monday here, of course Memorial Day. Most, for the most part, you won't even see them, they're under the pier, and what they're doing is they're putting hardware on. So all those piles, they're adjusting all those and, and making the final attachments on that. But otherwise, uh, that Green Pier work is done. And they're now, today, they're welding on the two piles that we put in at the Club Dock. And so that was, part of that work was to get those two piles put in. They were 48-foot, 12-inch, very heavy-duty piles. They're inch and 5/16ths thick. Um, we had a little trouble driving them, so that's why you saw that we had to cut them and then weld them back in place. Um, but they'll all, when we finish up, what you'll see is you'll see some concrete encasement around the bottom that comes up to where, um, the ramp would be where the pier is now, but it'll just be an 80-foot ramp. They, they'll be an 80-foot ramp that replaces the pier and ramp, so that'll allow for ADA compliance, because once you hit 80 feet in a harbor, they deem it compliant, even if the tides make it go up and down and it's not, you know, the slope that it needs to be to be totally compliant, but 80 feet is the length. So that's why that's being done, and you'll see that project resume in the fall after visitor season. So that's when we'll finish up tying all those piles, all that together with the structure that would lift that ramp. You would see the landside work and you would see the new floats come in, and then after that point, we take them out for the season. But for this season, you'll see all our old infrastructure go in. So that, that was the intent of that. Um, the barge that's in the harbor right now, it's moving at 6 o'clock on Thursday, 6:00 AM. So that'll be out for Memorial Day as we, uh, stated when we first took on this piece of the project. Um, and then Slater Construction, the one that's doing the waterproofing at the wastewater treatment plant, which is already done, and now they're in the, um, the pump station, saltwater pump station, which is in the Elbow area, uh, they'll be done with that work this week. So you'll see that close up, at least where the pickup trucks on top there, they're doing that concrete work. There'll still be work for, um, our contractor, Perk, that runs the saltwater, um, service for us, and City Cruise to go put that redundant pump equipment back in, and then, so then both of those pumps will be able to operate. Any questions?
I just had a question. Um, I know we're, we're looking to apply for the Helen, Helen Putnam Award at the League of California Cities with our coast, uh, their circuit system. Are we, are we taking really good pictures or video since the beginning of this Five Corners project? So, because that is a huge project that we should, when it's completed, be able to, um, get an award for.
So we have great pictures all the way from, you know, back seven years ago through, through our, through our demonstration with our community outreach.
Great.
Through every piece of construction. You, there's more than 5,000 photos, I would say. It's just, it's immense. And then, from there, what you'll see, we had a, uh, non-infrastructure component that was part of the grant, and so that's going to kick in here probably within maybe another couple months, and our consultants will get that. So what they're creating is, how do you use a roundabout? So they're ramping up as we get this finished, that we have this piece, this education piece that we do outreach with show and tell, and then we have something on our website, Forever More, that says, hey, if you come to town or any round, this is how you use this. So we can always just say, point to that, go read this, listen to this first. Hopefully you get it, ask questions after that. Okay? So that's coming.
Excellent.
All of that, I think, will help win an award.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks.
Well-earned.
Okay. Um, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, as you can see, we have a couple, um, department heads missing tonight, first one being Kevin Schmidt. I'll, I'll cover Kevin's, uh, harbor report. Uh, Kevin is over town picking up the electric boat. So it should be here tomorrow at some time. I'm not sure when he's coming back. So it will be out there in the harbor. Kevin says, you know, encourages everybody to come on down, and we know most of you have ridden the prototype, but this is ours. So it'll be down there and it's got all the logos and all the bells and whistles Kevin wanted on it, so we're excited to have that over here. Um, let's see, uh, Kevin was going to talk about the, the harbor, the Green Pier project, but Bob covered that. I would just want to add, um, thanks again to Bob Greenlaw and Kevin Schmidt for the long hours they put in on that project. They're out there constantly, both working with our business, community, our visitors, making sure that pier stayed open while all that work took place. Um, Joe did a great job out there, uh, and got it done on time, which, you know, we, we went into this a couple months ago thinking, this is a long shot, that this is going to happen, and it happened. I mean, Bob got it, Bob and Kevin both got it done, and, and really the foresight that they had and that, that Bob laid out there, if we get those piles in for the Club Dinghy Dock now, we don't have to pay that mobilization fee again in the fall, we're ready for it. Uh, and that's going to save us a ton of money to finish that project, which we have a $300,000 grant for to get that in. So that's all very exciting that that happened and it happened on time. Uh, it seemed a little chaotic, uh, out there, but it was, they seemed to have it planned. Um, Kevin, uh, does indicate that construction zones on the pier, uh, will be cleared by this weekend, so we'll be have everybody back in place. Um, and thank you, the businesses out there, they've been very patient and cooperative with us. Uh, the new Barbara Pearson dock is in and being adjusted. It should be operational again by the weekend. Fuel Dock Float, uh, scheduled to be installed this Friday morning, and that will be again operational, uh, prior to the, the Memorial Day weekend. Um, so that's, that's, uh, from Kevin. Uh, Dave Hart, uh, is also, uh, got stuck over town late this afternoon, he's on his way back, but, uh, wanted to have me mention a few things. First of all, Avalon's Kids Park opening, the new playground opening last week. Thank you, Mayor, for cutting the ribbon and also being the first to slide down the slide to make sure it was dust-free and safe. Um, it's been, we had, I think, 50 kids, Dave estimates there, uh, last week when it opened. It's been busy ever since. You can see kids over there now. Um, and, and this opening, in addition to the opening and improvements, uh, of the sports court that he put in, um, I, I think is, had so many recreational opportunities for the community and for mainly the kids. Uh, it's terrific and we, we understand, we received some emails, uh, very positive emails, but hey, what about, you know, toddlers and kids under five? And we're looking at those options too, as our next step. So thank you to Dave Hart and his team, and certainly Public Works for all the work they did in getting that, uh, park in. Um, and as, uh, I think, Jack, you mentioned, uh, Kenaby Park has been resurfaced, and that looks great, uh, looks refreshed, and we'll continue to make upgrades down in that area, including the volleyball courts, which we have, I'm not sure of the quantity of sand, but all-new sand being dumped there shortly, and we'll have that for the, for the volleyball court. Um, July 4th, uh, the theme is Surfing in the USA. I think, uh, I, I want to announce, I think it's already been out there on social media, that the grand marshal will be Walt Puffer, uh, Avalon's first county, LA County lifeguard. He started in 1972, worked from 1972 to 1986. Uh, Walt has enjoyed all the, uh, water activities offered here in Avalon, continues to, uh, to this day. Uh, this recognition is well-deserved for him, and congratulations to Walt. Um, and then finally, reminder, Memorial Day on Monday, uh, City will be celebrating Memorial Day at 11:00 AM up at the cemetery, so, uh, please go up there, feel free and be prepared to, uh, share any memories you have of, um, any, uh, military veterans that gave the ultimate sacrifice to this country, uh, Monday morning at 11:00 AM.
And let me ask, are we kind of, it used to be head-up by the VFW, but are we kind of, we've taken that over since there's no?
Right, we fill, we fill the gap. Um, you know, I think, um, we try to, to get some of the, the former VFW members, uh, to participate, and they will, I'm sure. Um, but, but historically, you know, people will be reluctant at first, but will eventually join and share their, their memories. So Monday morning, hopefully, the, the weather will continue what we've had the last few days. Uh, and then finally, uh, the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night, in addition to the items Kelly mentioned, we have 95 duly-noticed properties that currently hold a short-term rental of some sort, whether it's a CUP, grandfathered in, or a TRL, that we feel is subject to revocation. So those notices have been served, they've gone out, they've been posted in the newspaper, um, and like I said, we have 95 of those scheduled tomorrow. Um, it will, um, it, it'll be an interesting meeting in that each property has, you know, each Planning Commission member has certain, uh, distance requirements that they can meet to re, to act on certain property, whether it's a conflict of interest. So each set of these properties, we're going to be moving Planning Commission members in and out of the room in order to hear them. So, um, we'll try to stay on top of that. We've had a number of meetings, logistically, how we're going to handle that. Um, and we've really fit, tried to fit these into three separate buckets that are consistent with each other to, to run those through. So, um, as expected, we've had a number of the property owners that have responded saying, you know, that they want to try to cure, uh, the errors that led to the revocation, so they'll have an opportunity to be heard, uh, tomorrow night before Planning Commission and potentially, depending on the results, have an appeal to City Council. So we'll keep you updated where that goes. And this is, you know, these 95 are really the first round that we'll have in this revocation process, and this is something that we'll be looking to do annually. And then in June, we'll be bringing to Council, uh, regulations that we're looking to put in place going forward here. Um, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
Uh, yeah, just to note that we will have Scott Shapses, who has been working with Planning Commission on, uh, these revocations, um, in City Hall tomorrow night, um, to help with the process. So, um, he's been working on this for a couple months, and he'll be there to help Kelly and everyone else as we shadow through these various, uh, revocation hearings and the conflict of interest issues that go along with them. And that's all I have.
And I wanted to say, Scott did take good care of me.
Good.
At, at Contract Cities, yeah, he sat by me at dinner.
He said he enjoyed the conversations.
What's that?
He said he enjoyed talking with you and everyone else that was there.
Yeah, we had a good time. All, all the crew was great, thank you. Food was delicious. Okay. All right, department heads, I mean, uh, council members.
Um, I'll start, I guess. Um, well, last week, we did the play. We did, um, You Can't Take It With You, and I want to personally thank everybody that came out to support live theater and keep, uh, the arts alive in Avalon. Small but mighty group, and thank you very much. Um, and then the, the highlight of my week was, uh, the Contract Cities Seminar out in Indian Wells, and that was the first time I'd ever been to that one, and I wasn't even really aware that Contract Cities is, is tracked to Fire Department and, um, other services like that. So I thought that was an interesting thing, and, um, it was, it was a, a very cool networking thing, seminars were very interesting. Um, I did make, the, the biggest plus, the biggest bonus I got out of it was I spent a lot of time, uh, not a lot, but I, I spoke with the, um, City Manager and the Assistant City Manager of West Hollywood, and got, um, some really good, um, advice and forward progress, I think, uh, on the storefront, uh, dispensary, cannabis dispensary, that I will be following up on and, and hopefully running with that, with everyone's approval. Um, but then the coolest thing that I found, that I took away from that was, um, when we had a, um, discussion with, uh, the, um, the Board of Supervisors, Janice Hahn and, um, Lindsay Horvath, um, Supervisor Hahn spearheaded and, and worked with the city of, uh, of, uh, Norwalk. They are transforming an old hospital into, um, a mental health care village. So I find it refreshing, encouraging, delightful, and lovely that people are finally embracing the concept of homelessness is not just people that are drug addicts and all that stuff. It's, it's been mental illness for years and years and years compiling when they closed all the mental hospitals, and they had nowhere to go and they wound up on the streets. And so I think, I can see that, at least in California, it's, they're finally turning that around and they're embracing that. So this hospital is going to turn into, what she said, a mental health care village where we can provide humane, professional treatment and housing to people who desperately need it. And then Sheriff Luna also spoke about, um, the Men's Central Jail, and how old it is and how dangerous it is, and they've been trying to get rid of that and turn it into something else, and they're going along those lines too. They're, they're embracing the concept that we, just to incarcerate people that have a mental illness does not help. So it feels like at least Southern California is, is embracing this and turning it around, and, and that just made my heart fill up. So that's what I took away from the Contract Cities Seminar. It was a great time, it was, uh, a lot of fun. Those people are really silly, but they, they work hard and they play hard, so, uh, it was great. That's about it.
Um, just a couple of things. I attended Gateway Cities COG, um, for the monthly meeting. One of the interesting things, especially for nonprofits, was the, uh, they do this three times a year. The Port of Long Beach has sponsorships they do for our region. Um, and so, um, if you go to, uh, POLB, so that's portoflongbeach.com/sponsorships, um, they do, uh, granting of grants, basically, three times a year for nonprofit entities throughout the region. Um, so this can be as small as a few hundred dollars or a few thousand dollars. This can be larger, uh, grants as well, up to, I believe, a hundred thousand. Um, and so, um, would definitely recommend if anyone is looking for, uh, funding for any nonprofit to, um, look into that as well. And then, I just wanted to share on behalf of Councilmember De La Rosa, um, just that there will be a wellness fair at the Avalon School Gym on May 28th from 4:30 to 6:30. Um, this includes things like the City of Avalon Summer Program, so we're going to have a booth there, but there will also be info from CPR and fire safety, after-school programs, middle and high school sports programs, college readiness programs, counseling, Family Resource Center, junior lifeguards, which I'm super excited about for this year, um, and then a number of other things too. The Catalina Island Health Gym Membership Program, school enrollment, Lions Club Vision and Hearing Screenings, Women's Forum, Edison's, uh, preschool, Sucasa VIPs, and more. So, um, definitely, please plan to attend that. It sounds like there's going to be, again, a lot of services available, um, and it'll be actually on, on school property for that event on May 28th. Um, so that's coming up just a few days from now. And then, um, uh, to piggyback off of your discussion about homelessness, so Gilbert Saldate is the current, uh, Chairperson for Homelessness with the COG, and what the COG and LA Care have been doing in Southern California is pretty amazing too. Um, they've started creating facilities, there's two of them now, that encompass, uh, mental health care, drug addiction services, county services, and housing. And so, um, part of what our meeting includes every month, and I'll bring the story next time with me, I didn't have the paper with me tonight, um, is a story of a person who's gone through the program. So the most recent person that we heard about, she had fallen on tough times, was a foster child who became an adult and became homeless after that because she no longer had housing, ended up receiving housing through this program, went to a local community college and got her nursing certificate and was able to help others who needed help. Um, so it's inspiring, it's encouraging, it's actual numbers of people getting services. I would love to see us get services here similar that we could provide and help offer. The majority of them are temporary, they're meant to get people on their feet and to get everything kind of going for them again, to get them in the right direction. So, um, the gentleman we heard about the month before had just recently completed two months of paying for his own rent and having his own house and became a counselor at Long Beach City College. Um, so anyway, it's, it's encouraging to hear that discussion happening, not just in a space with the COG, but also with the county and with others, and hopefully that money continues to help build that, those programs.
Yeah, and I believe Supervisor Hahn was talking about that too, when they, when they age out of the foster system.
They're pretty much dumped on the street.
Correct. It's a very, yeah, it's.
So there's a lot of movement there.
Which is crazy to me, but, yeah.
That's great. In the midst of all this turmoil.
Yay.
Yeah.
Michael?
I have nothing.
Okay. I attended Contract Cities also, it was wonderful, but, um, I just wanted to share something that I think we all received. It's from, uh, LA County Public Health, that, I'll just read this, about medical debt. More than 134,000 Los Angeles County residents will begin receiving notices next week as a part of the first wave of medical debt relief, marking a significant step in addressing the financial strain caused by medical costs. The notices sent by LA County and National Nonprofit Undue Medical Debt inform the resident that their medical debt has been permanently retired and offer helpful information for individuals who need help with additional medical bills or are seeking financial assistance. The amount of debt being relieved through the first round of notices is 183,580,711.32. That's some accounting. Uh, eligible ren, eligible residents will receive an undue medical debt on Los Angeles County branded envelope in the mail with, without any need to apply. The program also includes preventative measures to reduce future medical debt through improved eligibility tools for financial assistance programs and increased access to resources. This medical debt relief is source-based, meaning only qualifying debts held by participating providers or collectors can be canceled. or collectors can be canceled. Relief cannot be requested. Okay. So anyway, some of you out there, if you're in that situation, might be receiving a letter from LA County.
And it has the LA County seal on the envelope, so it's not just mail.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Bravo to Paul and the play, too. He was great.
You have to see me coming. Hello, everybody. Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. Do come to the library on Thursday at 4 o'clock. We're going to have a really special concert. It's sponsored by the Music Center. We've got a special grant to have this performance here. It's a four-person doo-wop band. It's a family-friendly concert. It's going to be really good. It will either have a lot of people, or it's going to be really embarrassing, all of like three people. We will say it's Avalon Normal. I mean, that's just how it is. So we'll see how it goes. I'm very excited. We've actually never had this sort of grant here. So let's just see how it goes and see if we have a good crowd. I've heard they're fabulous. So please come. Coming on Wednesday, the 28th, we'll have our twice-monthly history talk with Chuck Liddell and Sandra Putnam. They, they lock horns. It's kind of awesome. It's really an interesting historical argument going on, very, very civil, very gentlemanly. But they, you wouldn't think history is something to argue about, but it's really very cool and interesting. Coming up in June, I'm going to have another concert with Craig Newton, who comes out here every few years. He's, he does a lovely children's concert. He's going to do something about the history of California in music. We're also going to be starting our summer discovery program in June. Going to have a lot of events, a lot of free books, a lot of programs. Please register at the library, read some books, get some prizes. And of course, in June, we're also going to be doing a celebration of Nightshade, the Michael Connelly book. Book available to check out by June 4th. I hope to have him a little earlier than June 4th. I'm going to do a special book club, Off the Island Book Club, on the 25th. Well, last, let's say last Tuesday of the month. I think it's the 24th. I'm not sure. I'm talking with the people. We'll see if we have anything exciting going on there. But I know we're going to have a great book club, whatever happens. And I'm also going to work on a scavenger hunt, and we're just going to live it up with that book, because I think it's going to be really, really a big deal. I'm very excited, and we'll make the town shine with it. And Avalon Library does books, so we're the book people. So that's what we do. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, and I was one of the eight people that attended the tech class.
And?
Yeah, how'd it go? I attended the tech class.
It was pretty, what did you think? Did you think it was a useful class?
Yes, it's very useful. But the staff was incredible that did the, did the instruction, but it was so funny. They were so patient. If I gave you the list of who was there, you would go, oh, my God, I understand why. But they did a great job. But it probably all should have been geared to just cell phones, Androids and the elements. But we did learn a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I only had to help Annie a little teeny weeny bit at the seminar with her phone.
We hope to have them back, because they're really, really good. We'll see. They're grant-sponsored, so they have a grant that I think is winding up. If they get a renewal from county-level stuff, they expressed great deal of pleasure over the trip. And I think it was a fine thing. So I would love to have more of that stuff here. So thank you for coming.
One man and seven women. Yeah, oh, my God.
We could have had more. We could have had more.
I know. But it worked out really well.
So next time, I hope. Thank you, guys.
Yes.
And I just wanted to do a FYI. We had talked about Michael Connelly's book, The Cover. In the United States, the cover is what we see. In England and Ireland, there is the harbor with the casino. And in Australia and New Zealand is the bay, is the bay with the casino. So I don't know why they did it that way, but I just wanted to point that out.
Our cover looks like Hawaii, wouldn't you think? That's not Catalina on the cover.
I asked a question, and they said it's a graphic arts-driven decision.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just wanted to point out, it would have been nice.
Casino should have been in there. The casino should have been in there.
That's hilarious.
Read the book. Oh, by the way, I sent out a review. I wrote a review of it for the paper on Friday, because I think when a thing goes to market on its first week, the paper should have a review. So I went and wrote it. I don't know if you did it as well, but I, I thought it would be good to have a review in the paper. Yeah, I sent it to the, I sent it to them. It should be in the paper on Friday, unless they bump it. So.
Thank you, Paul. Uh-huh. Anybody else? Consent calendar?
Consent calendar, item number one, approval of the minutes from May 6, 2025, regular city council meeting. Item two, approved total expenditures for April 28, 2025 through May 9, 2025, totaling $1,173,142.45. Item three, adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 2425 third quarter treasurer's report. And item four, adopt an ordinance establishing Chapter 10-8 and 10-9 of the Avalon Municipal Code, setting forth rules and regulations for use of Avalon beaches and parks.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve items one through four on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Second, and call for the vote.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
Item number five, public hearing. Is a public hearing to receive comment on the city's fiscal year 2526 community development block grant funds. Just want to point out that this is, you know, a combination of fiscal year 2526 and last year. To combine them again, we will be dedicating these to the ADA sidewalk, continuation of the ADA sidewalk project.
I'll open the public hearing.
Wow, look at the rush.
Here comes. All right, I'll close the public hearing.
You want a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the city's estimated fiscal year 2526 community development block grant, CDBG funds, to transfer into the revolving grant fund. Number four, adopt a resolution authorizing the allocation of the CDBG funds for the fiscal year 2425.
I'll second. You moved a seconded. Call for the vote.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember De La Rosa.
I like, I like the fact that it goes to the ADA corners.
Yes, I know.
We're getting close to done, yeah.
Item number six.
General business, item number six, are the Tremont Street easements for Five Corners Site Improvement Project. Mr. Greenlaw?
Good evening again. So this item seeks to authorize the city manager to set forth conditions and execute encroachment permits for property owners immediately adjacent to Tremont Street within the Five Corners Site Improvement Project, including 357 Clemente, 358 Clarissa, 357 Clarissa, 359 Catalina, and 357 Descanso, in conformance with the Avalon Municipal Code, Section 4-9.106. Okay, so these are the properties that we are currently working on with the concrete. So there's six properties there. So after the completion, all six of those properties are interested in having encroachments, some type of encroachment. So there's about two foot of space that will be left behind the current, the sidewalk that you're seeing being constructed. So that's the area that they would like to encroach. Five of those properties, the, what that, what that involves is mainly fencing, and some patios that were left, like right across the street, we have the one patio that, that we cut off, but it's still encroaching within there, and it could be adjusted in the future. And then landscaping. So really, what it is, is fencing that would be right behind the concrete sidewalk, and landscaping is the way that these owners want to approach this. So it seems like, it just expands a little bit of what would be an administrative process. And so to streamline that, we're asking that you delegate that to the city manager so that we can negotiate and finish this up. Still would have all the same details that we would be involved in as far as an encroachment permit, that 30 days, revocation, you know, example of that.
Insurance.
Insurance, bonding requirements. So all we're doing is streamlining, so we don't have to bring all six of them in front of council.
So we'll probably have a little better internal control than we've had in the past with all those encroachments and all of that, that is kind of.
Yeah. And one of the biggest things, of course, is liability. You have, have the insurance to protect the city from that liability for using that two foot of space. And we'd have more control, and that's what we're working on as far as an encroachment permit program. We're trying to make it so that we bring everybody into compliance, that there's a self-certification every year that says, whatever maintenance or whatever conditions we put that on, they would self-certify that they've done that. They would have the correct template form to send in, and then we could put those in the file, check. And then, if necessary, go out there and see if we needed to do any action against it. But otherwise, just want them to comply with the insurance and keeping the maintenance up of this. So a lot of these things are good for the community, of course, right, is we like to see the landscaping. We like to see it maintained appropriately.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, but there will be one property that's a little bigger issue that will come back to you singularly on that one. And that's the one on Descanso, okay? And that's the one where there's actually a piece of a building that was built over time, and that we need to work through those issues with you. Okay? So, yes.
So on the 357 Clemente one, was that something that we were going to postpone until after summer? Was that the request?
For.
The ones with the wall?
The one with the wall, yes. Maconica requested that we would complete that work in the second week of September. And that fit, I asked the contractor if that fits the schedule. Seems like we can work around that with everything that we're doing. So that would, and he's already engaged with a local contractor to adjust all those improvements on his own dime. Okay, so that, it's all good news, all of that. And as a matter of fact, I think the, the improvements you can see from the property right across the street at Drew, they're coming out. Everything's being renewed. It's all blending in. You'll see those transitions. There's not rough transitions. Looks like it's been there. It's supposed to be there. That's what we're trying to do, working with each one of those property owners. And that was the goal when we went out there, Devin and city manager and I, to get that done. So.
So everybody, I'm sorry, Bob. So everybody along that street is cool with it, except for this one address?
Yes, for 358 Descanso. And that's the one there, some bougainvillea is there. And there was the actual, the dining room. And the way that that happened, over a period of about 35 years, was that was a porch. Then it became a covered porch, and then it became a screened-in porch, and then it became windows, and then it became a dining room. And so you can see the old patio and slab and all that. There's a bigger issue that we need to take care of there.
Right, right, right.
Over a period of time, how to work with that. So you'll, you'll hear the details on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the rest of them are pretty straightforward. You see them, you see it happening, and it's pretty straightforward. It's how we allow them to go back with the fence right on the back of the sidewalk or on the property line. That's been really the big issue, okay, that they've been requesting. Okay, so that's what we're asking for tonight, so that you delegate us that authority.
All right, counsel. Questions? All right.
I need to authorize the city manager to set forth conditions and execute encroachment permits for property owners immediately adjacent to Tremont Street within the Five Corners Site Improvement Project, Tremont Street, including 357 Clemente, 358 Clarissa Avenue, 357 Clarissa Avenue, 359 Catalina Avenue, and 357 Descanso Avenue, in conformance with Avalon Municipal Code, Section 4-9.106.
I'll second.
You can second and call for the vote.
Four ayes and one absent, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Item number seven?
The final item tonight, item seven, is an ordinance designating fire hazard severity zones pursuant to Government Code, Section 51179. Chief Allegra.
So the maps came out just over about a month ago. And then we have so many days for public comment, and then we have to adopt an ordinance within 120 days. So this is the first reading. Nothing changed in ours. It's the same as the first go-around. Everything's in the very high fire hazard severity zone. Any questions?
Wish it wasn't so red.
Yeah.
How about pink or beige or something?
Pink and red, it's kind of nice, right?
Okay, any comments?
No public comment either, huh?
Okay, counsel?
I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance designating fire hazard severity zones for the City of Avalon pursuant to Government Code, Section 51179.
I'll second. Second, and call for the vote.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember De La Rosa.
I will be on vacation and not returning until the following Tuesday. So if there's any request for something they'd like the mayor to do, we have a mayor pro tem. And so they, you can call on Lisa Lavelle, or any of the other council members, I'm sure. Okay, all right. Meeting adjourned. Good night, Tony.